Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will all please stand for a moment in silence, please? Silence for all the veterans all over the world protecting our freedoms and giving us the things we have today. Thank you very much, Mr. Sittin. A roll call of participants to the board. Trustee Alpert.
Present.
Trustee Corrigan. She had some game issues, she told me early in the year, she couldn't make it today. Trustee Ho.
Present.
Trustee Osborne.
Present.
And Mayor Curly is present. We have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, April 1st, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, April 29th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Can I have a motion to approve the February 5th, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting minutes, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by?
Trustee Osborne.
Trustee Osborne.
Second.
And Trustee Ho. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Sure.
At this point, I want to jump the schedule to the Police Department first if I could, Chief?
Sure.
So we can, in case there's anyone here on overtime, I don't want to get destroyed.
Good evening, Board. On the month of February, the Police Department responded to 768 calls for service. As the Board is aware, the Police Department has been engaged in an initiative in the downtown area in order to curtail double parking, illegal U-turns, which both contribute to potentially dangerous traffic conditions. We've been assigning officers to selective enforcement details in this area for the past few weeks, where officers have been specifically concentrating on enforcing these types of violations. We've issued numerous warnings and citations to violators and will continue to do so to address the issues. I've also met with Director Zawicki from the Department of Public Works and Joe Hunt from the DPW to look at some new signage at the mayor's request, so we're going to be making some proposals to change some signage to make those conditions better also.
Very good, Chief.
I have one item for the Board's consideration for the agenda tonight. At this time, I would like to request that Sergeant Williams Samora is assigned to the position of Detective Sergeant. Sergeant Samora, can you come up to the podium? Sergeant Samora was hired by the Village of Suffolk Police Department in 2014 and assigned to the Patrol Division. In 2020, he was promoted to the rank of Patrol Sergeant and supervised patrol squads of uniformed officers and civilian dispatchers. In addition to his normal duties with the Police Department, Sergeant Samora is assigned as Assistant Accreditation Manager, Field Training Officer, and Police Instructor. Additionally, Sergeant Samora is a member of the instructor staff at the Rockland County Police Academy, where he has taught the course in police supervision as well as numerous blocks of refresher training for certified police officers. Prior to his employment with the village, Sergeant Samora was employed by the Rockland Paramedic Service as a paramedic, where his duties included providing advanced life support services to the residents of the town of Ramapo, including the Village of Suffolk. Sergeant Samora is a graduate of SUNY Empire State University, where he earned a Bachelor of Science in Public Affairs, and is currently a student at the Maxwell School of Citizenship and Public Affairs at Syracuse University, where he's pursuing his Master's of Public Administration degree. Last but certainly not least, Sergeant Samora was recently promoted to the rank of Chief Master Sergeant in the US Air Force Reserve, joining the top 1% of the enlisted force. His current unit of assignment is US Air Force Reserve Headquarters, Directorate of Operations, Strategic Deterrence, and Nuclear Integration. Sergeant Samora's military service spans several career fields and includes several combat aircrew deployments. The men and women of the Suffolk Police Department would like to congratulate Sergeant Samora on his new assignment, and we are confident that he will excel in the next chapter of his life. So at this time, I would ask the Board promote Sergeant Samora to that position.
Can I have a motion authorizing the mayor to promote Sergeant Williams Samora to the rank of Detective Sergeant, please? Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Ho. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Will you come up here? Mr. Curly? Really? At this time, with Sergeant Samora's wife Lindsay, daughter Billy, son Frankie, father Steve, and mother Peggy come up.
No, no. He's in 3000. It's all good. Listen, kids.
Let me help you square your dad. Yeah? Is that what you do? Hold up your right hand, which is my friend's right. Hold up your right hand. Ready, ready? I state your name.
I, William Samara.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Detective Sergeant.
The duties of Detective Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And now for the most important part, you do how you give this to your dad, his new badge.
Help me not to get a necklace of diamonds. You ready?
Great job.
One, two, three. Thanks.
One, two, three. Thank you. Good luck, too. Thank you. Thank you. I just can tell them, they can go out the door like this. Good. I just gave them a chance to clear out, that's all, okay? All right, this time I'd like to set some public hearings. Can I have a motion authorizing setting a public hearing to consider local law, mending Chapter 254, Chapter 25429, to be held on April 1st, 2024 at 7:03 PM? Motion, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Ho. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. A resolution authorize setting a public hearing to consider the adoption of 2024-2025 tentative budget, tentative budget to be held on Monday, April 1st, 2024 at 7:10 PM? Motion, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne. Second, please?
Second, Trustee Ho.
Okay, what we did was we just set the public hearings for the water rates, the budget, okay, and for local law, 254, in case you couldn't hear me, okay? Just wanted to make sure I got that last one right. In case of what didn't come through, I'm going to read the last one again, because I didn't finish it. Authorize setting a public hearing to consider the adoption of the 2024-2025 tentative budget to be held Monday, April 1st, 2024 at 7:10 PM? Motion, please?
Trustee Ho.
Motion made by Trustee Ho. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Second made by Trustee Alpert. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to authorize setting a public hearing. Have a motion, please? Authorizing setting a public hearing in a local law to establish sewer rents and water rents for the 2024-2025 fiscal year to be held on Monday, April 1st, 2025 at 7:05 PM? Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Ho. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. A resolution authorize setting a public hearing to consider the adoption of 2024-2025 tentative budget, tentative budget to be held on Monday, April 1st, 2024 at 7:10 PM? Motion, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Second, please?
Second, Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Ho. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. At this point, I'll let the attorney explain what that is about procurements and bidding, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. The general municipal law, which has provisions, which controls what municipalities can and can't do as far as purchase contracts and public works contracts, allows municipality to purchase goods or contract for services through other municipal entities. One of the biggest potential sources for contracts of that sort is Sourcewell, which is a Minnesota, a division of the Minnesota State Government. They bid nationally, so they very often get exceptionally good prices. The caveat is that in order to take advantage of purchases through one of these other entities, the way that they let the contracts has to be in compliance with the New York State General Municipal Law. The general municipal law that generally applies to municipalities requires that contracts and service contracts be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Sourcewell doesn't use lowest responsible bidder, as do, I imagine, some of these other similar entities, but instead they use the best value system, which would enable them to consider such things as product performance, quality of the craftsmanship, proximity of the contractors, product life, cost of maintenance and warranties. So the general municipal law gives New York municipalities the ability to decide that they will award contracts under either lowest responsible bidder or the best value. If we adopt this local law, it gives the village the option of awarding under either of those procedures, but by adopting it, it also gives the village the ability to purchase through Sourcewell. So that's essentially what this does. It adopts the best value method, and it enables them to then purchase through governmental organizations like Sourcewell, who utilize best value as the basis for awarding bids.
Okay, so at this time, if anyone would like to have any comments on this subject, this matter alone, more than welcome, come up to the microphone here. Being there are no comments, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion, please? Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Ho. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. At this point...
You want to decide if you're going to act on a local law?
Yeah, we like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like now at this point to have a motion to act on the local law to amend the village code by enacting a village chapel, chapter entitled procurement best value bid awards. Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Ho.
Motion made by Trustee Ho. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. At this point, I'll let the attorney explain what that is about procurements and bidding, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. The general municipal law, which has provisions, which controls what municipalities can and can't do as far as purchase contracts and public works contracts, allows municipality to purchase goods or contract for services through other municipal entities. One of the biggest potential sources for contracts of that sort is Sourcewell, which is a Minnesota, a division of the Minnesota State Government. They bid nationally, so they very often get exceptionally good prices. The caveat is that in order to take advantage of purchases through one of these other entities, the way that they let the contracts has to be in compliance with the New York State General Municipal Law. The general municipal law that generally applies to municipalities requires that contracts and service contracts be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Sourcewell doesn't use lowest responsible bidder, as do, I imagine, some of these other similar entities, but instead they use the best value system, which would enable them to consider such things as product performance, quality of the craftsmanship, proximity of the contractors, product life, cost of maintenance and warranties. So the general municipal law gives New York municipalities the ability to decide that they will award contracts under either lowest responsible bidder or the best value. If we adopt this local law, it gives the village the option of awarding under either of those procedures, but by adopting it, it also gives the village the ability to purchase through Sourcewell. So that's essentially what this does. It adopts the best value method, and it enables them to then purchase through governmental organizations like Sourcewell, who utilize best value as the basis for awarding bids.
Okay, so at this time, if anyone would like to have any comments on this subject, this matter alone, more than welcome, come up to the microphone here. Being there are no comments, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion, please? Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Ho. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. At this point...
You want to decide if you're going to act on a local law?
Yeah, we like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like now at this point to have a motion to act on the local law to amend the village code by enacting a village chapel, chapter entitled procurement best value bid awards. Can I get a motion, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Second made by Trustee Alpert. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, here I want to do a motion to authorize the, I want to start the, make it more accessible for outside dining, I want to start it earlier this year. I think it's best that we, to let the restaurants have a chance to go ahead and, to some of them, especially when you have nice weather, like we did on Sunday, so they can go ahead and put their tables out instead of waiting until later in the season. So we're going to start it, start it earlier this year. So can I have a motion authorizing the village clerk to administrative, to issue administrative permits for outdoor dining on village sidewalks and on parking areas located adjacent to a full-service restaurant in the Village of Suffolk?
Motion, please? Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Ho. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Terry Rice, lawyer, take it this way.
Right. The Board of Trustees has received an application for a special permit from Route 202 Autobody to operate an Autobody shop at that location. It requires a special permit from the Board of Trustees, site plan approval from the Planning Board, variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and compliance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So the orderly way to process the application, now that the special permit application has been received by the Board of Trustees, is to refer to the Planning Board for their review and recommendation on the special permit, for them to do a preliminary review to make a determination on the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Once they've done that, refer to the Zoning Board of Appeals for variances. If they obtain the variances, then they'll come to the Board of Trustees. If the public hearing will be held, of course, and if they get the special permit, then they can go back to the Planning Board for final approval. So what the resolution is for is to do all of those things, as well as to set an escrow of $2,500. The village has a provision in the zoning law that the Board can require the applicant to pay an amount of money, as suggested by their planning consultant, in, to escrow, so that the planning reviews and so forth are paid for by the applicant and not by the taxpayer. The recommendation from the planner would be for $2,500. So the resolution is to refer to the Planning Board for their review and recommendation at determination under seeker, and to set an escrow of $2,500.
Okay, just to explain what it is, they, that has to do with Route 202, 202 collision. There, I think they're addressing 16 Wayne Avenue, and there's a two-family house that was there, and they want to see if they can put a garage there with three bays. So we're sending it all to Boards everywhere it needs to go, to, it goes to them before it ever comes, you know, back to us. They have to do their due diligence and their job, Planning Board, Zoning Board, and everyone else. So what we do is we, we, we have a village planner who then will review the project also and decide different things that it may or may not need. So that's really what this is, what we're doing right now. So can I have a, have a motion accepting, putting the escrow deposit as $2,500 for Route 202 Collision, and also referring it to the Planning Board? A motion, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Ho. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, in addition, Danina's Restaurant has applied to the Planning Board for site plan approval to have outdoor dining in the parking lot next door to the building itself. There obviously is a parking requirement when, under the zoning law, when somebody is establishing additional seats. So in order to satisfy that, one of the options that's available under the zoning law is for an applicant to make application to the Board of Trustees to accept money in lieu of the parking requirement. The theory being that the village can collect money from people who have, are not able to meet the parking requirement, and at some point, there's enough money to create additional parking opportunities. So in this instance, they've applied to the Board of Trustees to set an amount of money in lieu of parking, and what we need to do at this point in order to have the planning consultant, as was explained with the last application, review the various aspects of this, the Board needs to set an escrow of $2,500 for the planning consultant to review the application.
Can I have a motion to set the $2,500 escrow for Danina's Restaurant, so the planner can look at it? Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Ho. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. At this point, I'd like to bring up Fred Rella, our grant writer, please? Suffolk, in case, I see some faces I recognize and some I don't, but Suffolk has a grant writer who helps us get different grants for different things. So he's, that's his specific job. He's an out, he's not a direct employee, he's an outside, you know, vendor under a contract, and he's been doing it for many years, and he actually, you know, is an old-time Suffolk kid. The actual pool, the Suffolk Pool, is named after Fred Rella. He was a mayor, that was his father way back when. He was also the supervisor of the town of Ramapo, and he also was, worked at Letty for many years and got many people jobs, and helped this community a lot way back when. So he's a well-known, he still cares about this village, and he's working hard for us, and I thank him.
Thank you for the kind words, Mayor, and good evening, Board. Before I start, I only have a few items I want to talk about, but first I want to congratulate the newly minted Detective Sergeant Samora. When the police chief was talking about his resume, I was thoroughly impressed with all the accolades that he has and achievements. It's just tremendous that Suffolk, a village of 11,000 people, can attract police officers of that caliber to work for us. So we're very fortunate, so congratulations on that. First, I want to talk about something with the Fire Department. We applied for an Assistance to Firefighter grant, which is a federal FEMA grant, so grants we compete competitively on them. So this is a national grant, so we're competing against everyone in the United States who has applied for this grant. And this year, we applied for self-contained breathing apparatuses, otherwise referred to SCBAs. And basically, it's a face mask, a harness, and two cylinders on the back, such that a firefighter can breathe in a environment that's detrimental. So the 33 SBAs, the estimated cost is $396,000. They're expensive, they're about $12,000 apiece, okay? So I worked with Chief Koffer on that. We did that for about the past 30-plus days. We think we put in a good application, and we should know in about six months where we stand with that grant. The 2023 Community Development Block Grant, known as the Ed Fagan Drive Project, which is the paving of the Athletic Fields Road, which goes from Ramapo Avenue down to the DPW, okay? That's in dire need of being repaired. Anyone who's gone on that road knows that there's a number of potholes and et cetera, and that's utilized by a number of people in our community, including the little league, many parents, and children. So we want to make sure that is a well and safe road for people to travel and use. The total cost to repave that project is $150,000. We're looking for $140,000 from the grant. We've basically been approved of it, and during the past month, Michael Janito and I were asked to fill out about a dozen pieces of paperwork, such that we can get what's called the subrecipient agreement between us and the county, such that we can actually begin the work in the project. We should receive that agreement within probably the next 30 days. I want to mention the 2024 CDVG grant. They're making these applications for the CDVG more and more, I don't want to call them obstacles, but more and more elements, which we have to achieve in order to acquire them. This year, not only do we have to have the Citizen Advisory Committee, the public hearings, the resolution, multiple meetings, and the like within the community, but this year we had to put in a initial application, and we had to get approved for the initial application to actually apply for the grant. So we just received the word at the end of last week that our initial application was accepted, and that's to pave West Park Place over in the West Ward, which is a very short street, just about 300 feet long, and then also Meadow Avenue to West Maple Avenue, which is about another 300 feet long. Both those roads are in dire need of being paved, and we have to have that application in in April. So that's on the agenda to do. And lastly, what I want to talk about is an archival grant that we're applying for through the New York State Archives. It's the Local Government Management Information Records Grant, and I'm working with Melissa and Michael Janito on that, and what we're going to do is, recently, our birth and death records from 1870, 18, excuse me, from 1896 to 1975 have been digitized, okay? They used to be in paper form, and they used to be in books and the like, and Melissa and Michael worked very hard, and they got those within the past year or so, digitized into a laser fee system, such that you no longer have to take the book and you have to, you know, find a particular record, then you have to either copy it, or type it, or whatever. So now someone can do it right at their computer, and it's also very good for retention and for safety of the record itself. It's not, no longer susceptible just to incidences of, you know, fire or water damage, mold, and et cetera. So now we'll have a digitized record of it. But we still have records from 1890, from 1896 to 1975, which need to be digitized, and also 2023 needs to be digitized. So we're putting in for a grant for approximately $80,000, that's due next Monday, and so I'm in the midst of writing that, and we should know in July of this year whether or not we receive that grant, and I want to thank Melissa and Michael for their work on that. So that's it.
Explain to them about the grants, how they're limited threat to certain areas by the county based on what they consider as low income or not low income. Just explain it to the public, so...
Yes, certain grants, such as the Community Development Block Grant, they only, you only can apply for a grant opportunity within a low to moderate income area designated by US Census Track and Block Group. It used to be that the Village of Suffolk had a couple of areas that qualified for it. Now we're down to just one area, which is over basically in the West Ward from West Maple Avenue going towards the Athletic Fields and curving up towards Parking Lot A, which is where the, across from the old Ole Ole, and then up Route 202 a bit. And low to moderate income is a relative term, because the low to moderate income as defined for the Village of Suffolk is different than the low to moderate income, for example, in the Village of Spring Valley, okay? So with the average median household income within the Village of Suffolk of approximately $90,000, a low to moderate income is not what a lot of people would consider low to moderate, but that is an area that is designated by US Census Track where we can apply. Hence, that's why we're applying for the West Park Place, the Ed Fagan Drive, and the like for the paving of those roads.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Fire Department. Jeremy Kaufler, he's our fire chief, has been here for more than a couple of years, been a fireman for many years here, and he'll be leaving, chief, as of April, if someone else be taking over the reins. He's done an excellent job, he cares about our community, and he gets up at night, won't go to sleep, and does what he has to do, and we thank him.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item on the agenda for the Board's consideration, and that's to extend coverage under the New York State Volunteer Firefighter Benefit Law to authorize village firefighters to participate in Rockland County emergency service activities, specifically a Frank Trumbetti from the Hook and Ladder to participate with the Rockland County hazmat team.
Can I have a motion to extend coverage under the New York State Volunteer Firefighter Benefit Law to authorize village firefighters who participate in Rockland County emergency services activities? Motion, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Second made by Trustee Alpert. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We already, anything else, Chief?
Nope, that's all. Thank you.
Apologize, thank you for answering those calls at night for us, in the daytime. You already did the Police Department, anything else? Chief, are you okay right now? Thank you, sir.
Nope, that's all. Thank you.
Apologize, thank you for answering those calls at night for us, in the daytime. You already did the police department, anything else? Chief, are you okay right now? Thank you, sir. Culture and Recreation, Kathy Mills, please.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Village Board. So a few things that we have tonight. There will be a Dare Dance at the Community Center, our amazing police department, this Friday, March 8th, from 7:00 to 9:00. Not just Battery Saturday, I don't know, Bruce, if you're going to come over and talk about it afterwards, will be this Saturday, March 9th, in front of Village Hall here. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's an event where people can come and bring their items that they would normally bring up to the recycling center in Pomona. So people just pull up their cars, we take everything out, and DPW will be there donating their time to take the items from everybody. And the Community Foundation is running that event. The Egg Hunt, believe it or not, is going to be here very soon. It's going to be three weeks, Saturday, March 23rd, at 11 o'clock. We ask that parents bring their cameras, and kids to bring their baskets to get their eggs, so we're really looking forward to that. We're hoping the weather will be just right for the egg hunt on the lawn. We now have our concerts all set, the dates and the bands. It will be 7 o'clock at the gazebo. If it is inclement weather, the concerts do go inside, so it's that, the date is set, but we're hoping for good weather for all the concerts. Friday, June 7th, we're going to kick off with Reflections, the big band. Friday, June 28th, a band called Seeing Red will be the band that evening. Thursday, July 11th, we have Eighth Grade Science. Thursday, July 18th, we have our kids concert, which is always a great attended event, with Kurt Gallagher. And then Thursday, July 25th, we'll finish up with Reflections, the big band again. So we're looking forward to a great summer. We're starting to hear from lifeguards that want to return, where spring, summer is right around the corner, so getting ready.
And we're actually looking together, Kathy, you know, working with us, on fixing up all the parks, actually, with money that we got from when buildings were built in the building, and with apartment buildings, and money in lieu of parking. So we're actually working on that now. Foxwood Pond, where they need fences, whatever's needed. And also, at the same time, since it's recreation and culture, we'll work on the Train Museum and a bunch of things we're working on to fix them all up. I have Trustee Corrigan and Trustee Ho working on the parks, I have Trustee Alpert and Trustee Osborne, you know, Kathy working on outside fitness equipment. That's even a thing for across from the hockey thing, across from Leo Leighton Firehouse there, from the Dare Hockey Rink. So we, and also, we're going to fix up the Dare Hockey Rink with that money also for the kids. So, a lot of things, a lot of good things come, a lot of exciting things coming, we're working as a team to do it, assigned different people to work on it, and it's working well. Right, so let's keep, let's keep it going, keep the rally going, and we'll have some of that stuff coming up and some of that equipment here by June, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, I said money in lieu of parking, instead of money in lieu of recreation, I said the wrong words. I correct that. At this point, I'd like to have a motion to open up public comment for anyone who'd like to say something. Can I please have a, a motion, please, open up public comment?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Ho. Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At this point, whoever would like to come up from the public, come up to the microphone, introduce your name and where you live, and just whatever you'd like to say, feel free.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, trustees. My name is Lois Chudy, 558 Kinstonville Court. Mayor, I was told that you're aware of what's going on on Prairie Avenue, right next to Billy Conklin's house. There's a house there that has a lot of people coming in and out, and have you noticed on, you know, the new Suffolk website that's out, there was, something was said today about the people there are putting up with, the residents living in that house urinating, there's public urination, and she told me that you know about it. I want to know if you know about it and what you're going to do about it. Do you know which house I'm referring to?
Just so I understand, who told you I knew about what? Just curious.
The, her name is, I forget what her name is, but it's the new website, it's the new and improved Suffolk website, and she put it up today that, I asked her to come tonight. Her name, I forget what her name is, but she said that her house, you know where Billy Conklin's house is?
Yes.
Well, it's the house right next door.
Okay, I know the house.
And it was sold.
Right.
It was sold.
Correct.
And there's people coming in and out all the time, different people.
Okay.
She said her kids can't go in the backyard, the residents are catcalling her children. There's beer cans, public urination this week.
Have, do you know if she's called the police on this, on these incidents?
I don't know if she called the police on that. I spoke to her on Facebook, I just commented, and I told her she should come to the meeting tonight, and she said she couldn't make the meeting.
If it's the house, I think it is the house, that's the house after that, so.
She has.
So it's be a third house.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, there was a house that, I spoke to someone, Mrs. Bosa, what's that, your name?
I think that's her name, yes.
Okay, I spoke with Mrs. Bosa of 43 Prairie Avenue, I actually talked to her. Matter of fact, so did Trustee Osborne talk to her, okay? The code enforcers went there, okay?
Uh huh.
This is a while ago, okay, they went, they were building different walls. They went in there, they made them, they got them to cure the violation, and that's what happened there. I never heard again from Mrs. Bosa, I never heard about anyone urinating on trees or not.
Well, that's what she, she put up on that website today.
I'm not arguing, that could happen, but they have to call the police then, I can't, I can't, you know.
No, I agree with you, I agree with you.
If she calls, I beg people, call the police, they will come. That's what I, I need the public to call the police. So, when that happens like that, so, this one you're talking about, actually, the chief got to me on this, okay, because I don't see every Facebook page, you know, right away, it doesn't come up.
Right, right.
We went out to that property today, and a code enforcer went to, if it's the same property.
You went today?
Well, 45 Prairie, yeah. And there's nothing on the lawns, there was no dirty, they couldn't get in, when they knocked at the house, the code enforcer, no one let them in, okay? So, I don't, you could go to the property now, there's nothing, there was nothing, this is when I, you know, I assume it's a same, so I don't want to say it's a same, because I don't know, I'm talking about 45 Prairie Avenue, and there was nothing wrong with that house at that.
How many people living in that house?
I, I don't know, I've never, I have no idea how many people living in that house, okay?
Well, according to her and other people that live on that block, there's people coming in all the time, they're renting out rooms, and it's transient, it's all different people.
Well, I don't, I don't know, I do not know that.
All right, well.
Okay? But we have, a code enforcer went there today, code enforcers have gone there before, but if you leave here and drive by right now, you'll see it's not, there's nothing there. And I actually sent two people, I actually, I actually, because the code enforcer was out doing other inspections on Hillcrest for issues, I actually asked Joe Hunt to drive by, he took pictures and there was nothing. Then I, then I sent my code enforcer out too, and he saw nothing. So we have to see it, but if someone sees someone urinating, and, listen, it's not good, nobody wants to see it, it's not good, okay? But we have to call the police on that. You know, so I need, I need the public to, see, and even if they're not there right then, if they call the police and they say, oh, the guy had a brown shirt, the police then can see.
Well, that's what you said in September, you said you wanted people to help you out.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, this, chief, can you come up for a second?
Sure.
Wait for the microphone, chief, please.
I'm aware of the posts that you were referring to, so I went back today and looked. We've had no police reports whatsoever from that area regarding this.
She's never called you?
No, ma'am. So, you know, Facebook and social media and everything is a great way to get the word out to everyone, but that's not helping us enforce these things.
No, absolutely, and that's why I told you to come.
So when people are seeing these things going on, they need to immediately call the police, if you can get a description of what the person looks like, what direction they're heading, that's helpful for us. Our response time is under two minutes, so 90% of the time, if you say, this is going on in front of my house right now, this is what the person's wearing, so and so, and they're walking away, an officer's going to contact them.
But you saw what she put up.
I saw what she put up, but she never reported it to the police department. So we can't, unfortunately, we can't be everywhere all the time, so we rely on people to call when they're seeing these things. So I would encourage her to call.
All right, I will, I'll reach out to her and I'll tell her.
We want her to call, because we want to take some people.
Of course, I know, that's what you said.
We want to do this, we, this is, like I said, I had code enforcers out doing other issues today, for, it's a constant, it's a constant thing, and it's a constant, it's a constant fight, I will not lie, okay?
Right.
But even, even behavior in life is more constant, okay? I don't care, that's why, you know, me and the chief, we recognized double parking was getting worse, we, the chief recognized walk downtown. I saw, last night, 8 o'clock at night, I watched two cops walking, you know, right around, went all the way then to downtown, they stopped at the stop at town, she was here before the sergeant, okay? Sergeant Adams, what officer done. And it was great, all the way, and then they come down, and they go up the alleyway there, the Hall Place, and I, you know, that's, that's what I asked the chief to get done, and he's doing it. Can he do it every time? No. They can't do it every time, because sometimes there's two police officers on duty that respond, okay? And one could be up over in the West Ward, and the other one could be up on Sagamore, okay? So, can they do it? But no, but have they? After, you know, after we sat down and we talked about it, did the chief do it? Did he put out, you know, standing up and tell them how to do it and what to do, and they did? Are they listening? I think they are. Can I stop every, and I'll use the proper word, knucklehead from doing it? I cannot. I cannot stop every knucklehead, because there are knuckleheads out there, there are selfish people out there, okay? And that's why I'm very careful on parking with this village, okay? I think this village has made drastic mistakes over many years, and I'm trying to hold off and correct those mistakes now, but it's not easy. I sat down with someone else that wants to put an apartment building in, okay? I said, Mr. Rice was with me, I said, two spots or nothing, okay? You need two spots. Well, we did things like, like another building on Orange Avenue, they want, 1.25, 1.25 from the village, it's ridiculous. We cannot just let anyone come in anymore and make their business in Suffolk bigger without having a cost or supplying of the parking, because there should have been hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in an account. And I said the word parking, you know, I said the wrong word, parking, because that's the one that's always on my mind, we got money in lieu of recreation. But we would have got, we should have got when people did things, money in lieu of parking, and there wasn't. Well, this board had changed that law now, and we hold, we're holding ourselves responsible to make sure we get those monies, okay? But we, but I, listen, I live those same things as all of us do, with people, and, you know, some people not respecting us, okay? So how we do it was with strong enforcement, strong enforcement, strong enforcement. Do we make mistakes? Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm human too, I do too, okay? But I, but I'm not afraid of going out there. 6:30, Saturday morning, I was out there in front of a house checking it out, I went to houses on Hillcrest, I went to houses on Woodline, I talked to neighbors. Okay, tell me, tell me what you see, okay? Tell me what you know is going on here. I'm not afraid of talking to people, I'm not afraid of going out there. 6:30 in the morning, Mr. Cruddy right there, I said, Pat, come on, we're going to go pick up some garbage together. He followed me up, I had my pickup truck here, the village truck, we picked up things, because it was, it was a few feet in, okay?
No, I'm going to have her reach out to you, I'm going to have her reach out to you, and I'm going to tell her to call the police, but I did invite her to come to the meeting tonight.
If she sees it, call the police. I was at her house. Former Chief Osborne was at her house, okay? He knows, we, we stress these things to people, but I can't, you want to go on Facebook and say this? You can, but, but, please do the other, the other things are more important, call us first, and then go on Facebook, because, especially if it's two days later, I can't, how am I going to help you? And I want to help you. I want the chief of police wants to help you, hm? But it's tough when we're not getting that information, you know, sometimes from the people, because it, for many different reasons, right? I think Miss Ball is a very nice person, maybe she feels she's not, okay, let me just go into, and I learned this because I had to read appellate division cases since I've become mayor, because I'm lucky to have pride, the smartest guy in the state of New York when it comes to zoning, and I believe that 100%, okay? But, let's say you have a single-family neighborhood, and you and your husband are living there with a kid or two, and your friend moves in with you, and that's, they have a husband and a kid or two, right? As long as you live as a family, as long as they pay their bills together, they chip in for bills, and they have dinner once in a while together, that by the law is a family, and I can't do anything about it. It came down with an appellate division case under group homes, when group homes came in, and they let different individuals live in a place and do group homes. So we cannot do anything about that, okay? The rental registry will be come, be mailed out as of tomorrow, we send it to another company, this taxing agency. Every property owner will get that rental registry. We're going to require every person who has, who has a rental, that they have to inform, as if not, they're going to get hit with Pines penalties and even possible jail time possibly, okay? But it's not easy with the courts these days. The chief of police is hampered, these lieutenants are hampered, every police officer is hampered, because they go, they arrest someone, and then by law, they can't give them bail, and they're right back out, okay? The chief of police now gives the tickets for public intoxication, right? I sit with them, I see, you know, they show me things, they're, they're trying, but unfortunately, we need, you know, we need, bail reform has to be changed, 100%, okay? The spirit of bail reform, in my opinion, in my opinion, was to, not to have someone sit in jail for 300, for a whole year because they didn't have $300 bail. That, and that is the right thing, someone shouldn't sit in jail for a year because they don't have $300 in their life, okay? But if you're going to go and punch my mother one day, and I let you out so you can punch someone else's mother the next day, that ain't right. That isn't going to work, that doesn't fly with me, okay? But we are hampered, our hands are tied, okay? So we do a lot of, right, boom, right, you know, come back, okay? We actually issued one of our first arrest warrants for a person who had house violations wouldn't come to court recently. So we went to the judge, we got a warrant, okay? Well, now the guy wants, and I respect him. I will treat every single person the same in this village, okay? No different, and that's what's going to keep us out of trouble, and that's the right thing to do. Everybody gets treated the same, the law applies to everyone equally.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Board, Sarah Horn, 23 Yorkshire Drive. Thank you very much for coming to the resolution with Little League that we spoke about last month. I'm excited for opening day on April 13th, and so is my almost 11-year-old, so thank you for working that out with.
Can I, can I tell you something else, I'm going to interrupt. I know why you're here, you're here for the water problem, which Charles is working on, I know why you're here, but I'm going to.
I have another question before that, but go ahead.
Okay, no, go ahead. It's your, it's your microphone, go ahead, I follow you.
So I, I am going to ask about that, but I did have a question, because I did see in your note about the grant for the parks, and you did talk about a few of them, you know, there's a park on Yorkshire Drive, right? It's not the Dare Park, there's another park on the other side of the road, up the street. It is in, like, complete and total disarray, I don't even know if there are lights there, I don't know if that is on your list to be worked on.
Is that in Suffolk, can I ask Kathy, is that in Suffolk Ramapo what she's talking about?
That's considered around the town of.
That's a Town of Ramapo Park, yes.
Yorkshire, that's Town of Ramapo, on Yorkshire, on the right, going north?
Joe, Joe, please come up, please come up, Joe.
That's the town.
Please come up. Come to the microphone, Joe, it's better.
The sliding wood.
Correct, that looks like it's.
The Suffolk's Park.
Yes.
Okay.
And it looks like it's out of a bad harm.
Come to the microphone, Joe, I can't hear you, all right? Just, just turn.
It looks like it's out of a bad harm.
I'm not sure which one you mean, that's why, that's why I asked.
The park is on Yorkshire, halfway up to the parking lot where Town of Ramapo Park starts.
Okay.
It's actually the back half of our running track.
That's the one you meant, the one further up by Yorkshire, I didn't see what she meant, okay?
That's got a walking path that's in disarray, but this park does not have a light to illuminate it, and the residents that live there lock their door. their door.
Have you ever told Kathy this? Just curious. You ever had the discussion with Kathy?
No.
Oh, okay. Next time try to talk to each other.
Well, I didn't know it was being brought up, but I just wanted to clarify that it is our park.
Yeah, well, because one of your grant came out, I said, I'm gonna ask if that part is being addressed, because there are a lot of kids that live in the area, but the park is pretty much unusable, inhabitable. It's in, it's in pretty bad disarray, so.
Listen, I'll get Kathy up there and then we'll review it, okay?
Yeah, great, and yes, I am gonna, I am gonna.
That's why we're here.
I am gonna ask about the water issue that is happening. I did send you an email earlier in February.
Charles is actually working on it, so I know he's, I really oughta let Charles answer it, because I can't, it's his, it's his game.
I'm just curious, because I did send a note, and I don't know about the code, but in the code 261-18, it does say that Public Works has the ability to discontinue water service if the amount of wastewater, you know, if it's an excessive amount of water that's happening. So again, I don't know all the laws and rules of codes, but Public Works has the ability to turn off water service.
But is it their water that's doing it? Or is it, is it water from their house that's doing it?
Yes.
I don't know that. I don't know if it's from the rain getting in their basement.
No, no, it's water directly from their house. I sent you a couple videos, you can literally see the pipe coming out of their house.
I see the pipe coming out.
It's water from their house. Where else would it come from?
No, no, I disagree. Not whether it's coming from their house, is it public water from the village is what I'm saying, right? I don't know that answer. Is it public water, okay?
I don't know the answer to that either. Do you, I mean. I mean, it's, it's so bad at this point, and I'll let my neighbor talk, but it's a serious problem. I'll let you.
Okay.
I'll sit down, I'll let you.
All right, sure, okay.
All right, so the property that is in question here has a, like most people do, they have a sump pump in their basement, and that's where the water is, so it's essentially stormwater or groundwater that the property owner is pumping out of his basement. And I guess that many, many people have the same situation. I was up there last week again with the building inspector. That particular day, no water was coming out of his pump, the pipe from his sump pump. There was no running water, there was no standing water. I did happen to speak with the property owner once again. He is in the midst of talking with contractors, and has also had a discussion with the building inspector for permits. So he plans on putting in a drywell to accumulate, be able to actually store that water, and would eliminate any issue from his sump pump. But you gotta make it clear that you're at 20.
I'm at 21.
21, 23?
Yeah, and it's 19.
Right.
And I have a sump pump too, but it's not the water that his sump pump pumps out in those waters.
Well, the day I was there, there was nothing being pumped out.
I understand.
Yeah, well, I can understand. So you gotta understand that 19 is higher than 21, higher than 23. Your neighbors on the backside of you are also higher than you. So, you know, water runs downhill, right? So, you know, a portion of this may be as a result of his sump pump, but there is another portion that you just, because we've had over the last four months, we've had enormous amount of rain. Everything's totally saturated.
Right.
But in any event, the property owner is gonna take, essentially, you know, take the proper action, put in a sump pump. He's looking at probably being able to get that accomplished. He's talking sometime in April. So that's pretty much the update.
Can I ask a question, Charles? I have a sump pump, a sump pump, my neighbors, we have one up my neighborhood. Is there any way, and this may be just a, you know, a shot in the dark, but you can obviously see where the water is going. Obviously, it's going, I know where you are, I mean, I talk to you all the time, it's shooting my bike. Can you put it at a different angle? And that's just a thought for the contractor, so it won't come flying down towards the houses in the grass, and I know it's going back in the ground, but you could put pumps far out. I'm just trying to, I know the situation, I spoke to you, I've seen it. Just a thought.
The, you know, this property owner did, you know, last time we were out there, we did talks about, you know, possible options, even prior to discussing these options, he did relocate his pipe that discharged into the middle or upper portion of his property.
Okay.
So it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be able to infiltrate into the soil, hopefully by the time it made it down to the road.
Right, I'm just thinking so.
But the road, the soil, everything's so saturated right now. Normally, it would be able to infiltrate into the soil, but because it's so saturated, it's just, you essentially got sheet flow.
Okay, all right. So the solution is, he has agreed to put in a drywell, which should take care of this problem, okay? I say should, in case you come here in man, all right? Cover myself. But drywells are the solution for this. I think it's happened before, so the gentleman is willing to do something with it, and hopefully, I think if we stay on him, we go up there again and just chat with him, I think we'll be fine, Charles, all right?
Yeah.
Thank you for following through, Charles.
That's Charles.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I had no intentions of getting up, but you just hit a great problem I've had for 12 years. When they paved Memorial Drive, if we get an inch of rain, I have a small lake in the road. That's why every year I say, "Charles, are you gonna pave my street?" And it never gets paved. All they had to do was angle it towards the lake. I mean, one inch of rain, and you get a puddle from here halfway to the chairs, and it gets this deep. So can you imagine what it's been like with all this rain? Maybe we'll address it this year, after 12 years of asking?
I don't remember you asking for 12 years, I've come to many meetings, but maybe.
Well, you've been here, you must have.
I don't call.
You must have heard it once or twice.
Listen, 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 the new owners will probably deal with the new owners, since you're selling any.
I am not selling my house.
Oh, you changed your mind, okay.
We're not going anywhere.
All right, that's good. We like you coming here, Jim. Very good.
But really, I'm serious with this water problem.
I'll ask Charles to look at it, okay?
I think he's looked at it more than 10 times already. He knows where it is. Please, maybe this year is the year.
Okay, we'll see. Thank you, Jim. How you doing, sir? Just say your name, where you live, thank you.
Good evening. Heshel Danciger, I live on 21 Yorkshire Drive.
Oh, very good, okay, this is the gentleman owns the house, that's nice. I like that, I like this, he comes here, talks.
Yes.
Oh, yes, we got the email from you, I recall that. Yes, okay. Well, you heard what he, you heard what he said about the drywell, okay?
So I would like to add a few things to what he said.
Can you speak up? I'm not trying to.
So I would like to add a few things to what he said. In the past four years, nothing was done. I spoke to the previous homeowner, he had to put in close to $30,000 in his pool, and the contractor said it was due to water damage that was sitting on the property. In the past four months, he hasn't changed the direction of the pipe. I have a few videos, February 26 is another video, the standing water was there all the time. There was a terrible, terrible mosquito infestation, and it's by now, it's a health concern that I have, besides for the water. There is no way to walk on my entire property. It's completely, you can literally sink in that property. The water's constantly there, there's videos, pictures, about 15 to 20 times a day, the sump pump turns on. I have a sump pump, there's a bunch of neighbors that have sump pumps that either gets discharged or a train.
You're not pointing it towards her house, are you? You ain't going towards her house, are you?
No, no, no. No, they put in a lot of money in a French drain and connected it to the main drain. There is literally standing water, I don't know how it's illegal, I don't know how discharging water onto someone else's property. About four months ago, when he hired a contractor, they basically planted trees that absorb the water, and then they dug a, about six to seven feet, just a hole in the ground. I don't know if that was done legal with the permit or not, but ever since that was done, it is completely worse. It's dangerous in the winter, and I'm not sure what I'm gonna do in the summer, especially with the mosquitoes.
Have you ever talked to this neighbor yourself?
I even offered him to pay, to partially pay for something to be done. I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not here to cause a ruckus, I offered to pay.
I don't see you that way, okay, I just didn't know if he, I didn't know what.
Yeah, I asked him a few times.
Charles, when you, Charles, when you talk to him.
Yeah, actually, I was just talking.
Charles, when you talk to this gentleman, he committed to doing this drywell, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so I think we have to give him a chance now to see if he does it, okay? And then, then it becomes a legal question, is who actually can, can make him, because this is all you people, it seems like, and a lot of them, I seen on the other side too, there's a lot of sump pumps there. So, and I didn't know this all these years, I lived here until the last, ooh, really, until the last few months.
The drain.
That there's so many sump pumps up there.
The drain, well, that's illegal, so I don't have.
But it may end up becoming a civil problem between you and him.
No.
And we're trying to prevent that. Let's see if we can work it together.
Another person in Yorkshire just did it. I saw them doing the construction. They put a drain out in the way like any garden. To where?
Charles, you gotta speak into the microphone, please. Okay, well, sir, sir, I'm gonna leave it at this, sir. I'm gonna leave it at this. The gentleman said he was gonna do it, let's see if he does it, okay? If not, we'll have to.
How long should we wait?
Well, I think he, I think he represented he's gonna do it in April, then it's March now.
No, and also, he said he was gonna try to move around the pipe. It just constantly flows water. He mentioned also that he's gonna move the pipe somewhere closer into his property.
I think they already did move the pipe once, didn't he, Charles?
Nothing was moved. I take pictures every day.
A portion of his property, so.
That's where it was sitting the entire time.
Standing 30 feet or 35 feet from your property.
What happened originally coming out was one of those problems, and when I started asking about this, because there's literally a hole coming out of the front lawn, and I'm dumping the water straight to the street, which is a problem.
Unfortunately, we can't, you can't get your comments, because you're not the microphone. So just so you know, we won't be able to track them. And I wanna, I want you to, comments are the important, everyone's comments are important.
So, so what happened originally, when I first started asking about this a couple years ago, was, and then I think you had come out, they moved the pipe. So there was a giant pipe that was literally like this big, coming out of his front lawn, which I'm guessing was probably connected to his sump pump. So when I started complaining about that, that giant hole in the front lawn, because it was only probably maybe less than 10 feet, it would literally run over, the water would be so high, it would run over the Belgian Blocker, and then cause ice damming, and it could be dry for months, and the street was wet. So he plugged up that hole in his front lawn. So the water has to go somewhere. So now, instead of going out his front lawn, it's going out his backyard, which then floods Herschel's and my property. So he did address it and move it, but he didn't fix the problem. So if you're saying he's gonna put a drywell in April, we have to give the man a chance to do the work, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you. That's, that's the best we can do, okay?
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, sir. That's it, no more speakers, no more speakers. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm kidding. Say your name, please, say your name, please, and your address, please.
My name's Anne Marie Urrig, I'm on 39 West Maple Avenue. So thank you so much for letting me come here today, and I just wanna thank you for the great sidewalks on West Maple Avenue, they're beautiful. But I still have a complaint about all the garbage all over the ground, everywhere. I wonder if we can do anything about it. My ideas are, you know, to educate the homeowners or renters in the proper way of disposing of garbage on the street. Putting lids on the garbage can is the most important thing. There's garbage everywhere. If you go there, you'll see it. It's not healthy. It brings rats, it brings rodents, and it's not good for our community. So, you know, we have to hold these people accountable, and I don't know how we would do that, but I could help in a way. I offered to you, Mayor Curly was nice enough to come to my house last year, and I offered, we need to do something. I also have a complaint about the entrance of the West Ward. When you drive there, Chestnut Street, it looks like you're going into Harlem. The train, trestle, or bridge, or whatever you call it, is terrible. It looks terrible, it's dirty, it needs to be painted. The whole entire, both walls on both sides need to be painted. The stairways smell of urine, and I know you're gonna say it's the New Jersey Transit's responsibility, but I think we need to make them accountable, too.
New Jersey Transit came last year and painted those and cleaned those, those things going up, okay? I was there, I actually put pictures out to it, so they did come, okay?
But the walls, the outside walls?
Outside walls, the stairs, yeah.
The front, the front of the bridge?
Yeah, okay, that's.
I can take pictures of it.
That's a different issue. I have, I have a situation going on with, I am on it, but it's, and I may just go ahead and do it, do it ourselves without them. I think I talked to, well, I won't say who, I talked to someone in the Department of Public Works, about if I can't get them to do it, I'm just gonna get the police to block off the roads, and we're gonna do it like a volunteer day, and we're gonna fix it.
That would be a great idea.
With some qualified people. The problem is.
I mean, I could supervise.
I don't need any supervisor, I need workers, young lady.
I can't do that.
Okay, no, you'll, we'll find something for you, all right?
Yes.
You'll serve the coffee, okay?
I could do that.
Okay, but I think it's not just that, it's a question New Jersey Transit and Metro North. They're both denying ownership. They're both denying ownership.
Somebody owns it.
That's how big government, I know that.
I think you have to go after them.
Listen, we're like that often, because we're the ones who do New Jersey Transit this side, okay? I just, with Rockland County, I just, I just agreed to, waiting for them to give me paperwork to do actual study on that whole station, about getting it done over, making it handicap accessible, and fixing it up, okay?
That's great.
So that, that was through Ed Day's office. So they, they had approached me if I was willing to do it and participate in any way I could, I said, "I'm in 100%."
I mean.
I agree, I agree with you, you're 100% right, and something will be done, you gotta give me, I'm not saying April, April, we already got something going on, drywell. But I'll say, I'll say, I'll say intimate, okay?
I even think, like, you know, in the beginning of Chestnut Street by that bar?
Right.
They have that nice mural? Couldn't they do that, like, underneath the bridge?
Whenever you start getting murals, you start having to put fights and lawsuits.
Yeah.
I want a nice Suffolk blue, okay?
Suffolk blue, okay, all right.
Yeah, I like Suffolk.
Something clean.
I like so, or I like, I like green too, I'm an Irish guy.
Well, I'm Irish too.
But I'll take blue, all right? So that's, that's how I look at it. So I've, I've actually, I've actually had the building inspector, who's very talented, actually look at with me, okay? That actually was supposed to be done when they did the Sheldon Building. That was a deal they had made, when they built the Sheldon to fix it. But then the Sheldon came back and said, "Listen, the village is owned, and we can't even touch it, no one will even help us." So I've actually been in touch with New Jersey Transit, Rockland County, and I gotta call it to Metro, to Metro North, okay? So I'm gonna get it done once in a while. I got, I got some high school kids, those two kids in the back there are gonna help me over there, two or three of them in the back. They don't know it yet, and they're gonna get extra credit, okay, from school, all right? But, but, well, listen, the only thing we can't do is a thing we don't try to do, okay?
Okay, and who polices that area? Do we do that, or does?
What do you mean by police?
Like, when people urinate, I know you don't see it. But if they see a presence.
If I see someone urinating, I smack him in the back of the head, I'm gonna go to school, okay?
I run.
But if you see.
I don't wanna see it.
But if you see something, everyone has a cell phone these days, call the police.
Yeah, no, I understand.
If you see the blue shirt, just call the police, okay?
But is there a police present? Is there?
Actually, it's Metro... Actually, it's the Jer... Let the chief explain it. Chief?
Chief Block, I just, from experience, and I know Chief Block, we've talked about this down there. Just call the Suffolk police, New Jersey Transit, or excuse me, Metro North police, 'cause it's in New York, they'll come and respond. But Suffolk PD always does, where if there's any incidents on a train coming in Suffolk or in that lot, they're gonna go and take care of it. And if it's something that's out of the jurisdiction, they're gonna handle it. For safety and call Metro North. So, I just commend them, because they've done it many times. So, just call Suffolk, and they will take care of it.
Right.
They're not gonna say it's, "Oh, it's not ours. It's the tracks." They're gonna come, and they're gonna take care of it.
No, I understand. So, if I call you, you're gonna come? But is there anybody patrolling the area? That's what I mean.
Yeah, they patrol. They patrol all their damn zones.
I don't know. I'm just asking.
Suffolk police do. They... Listen, they made arrests on the trains as of recently, you know what I mean? So, we get called on the trains, like, because the transit police are too far away. So, Suffolk's been on... They've actually been on the trains within the last few months, you know? Fortunately, one of our cops got hurt doing it, huh?
Okay.
But with arrests. So, Suffolk police will do it. They do drive by there. They're in the West Ward, you know?
Right.
They drive through the West Ward. That's the West Ward, so...
So, what are we gonna do about the garbage?
Well, you say about the garbage.
It's all over, Mayor.
What the village was gonna do, what the village... Listen. Unfortunately, we always just have to be diligent in working on it and trying to pick it up and do what we can. Downtown, I changed the way we do business. I put someone on to collect garbage, walk the streets. Emptying garbage, I'm gonna walk the streets between 8:00 and 10:00, okay? I can't help when there are pigs. So, all we can do is get DPW followed up. But what this village is doing is, as I mentioned earlier, the rental registry is going out, too, and another letter is going out to all the residents in reference to all the different rules, you know, size of garbage cans.
And that'll be on there.
And how you're gonna do things. It's still, it's not... You're not always gonna get... We had big wind the other day, you know, and everything went all over the place, and that's just... I can't...
I totally understand that.
I called up God, but he wouldn't stop the wind.
But you know the culprits when you walk the street all the time.
I'm not arguing with God.
You know where you can't walk, because there's chicken bones on the ground.
Where's the chicken bone?
And the dog is gonna eat it.
That's coming from... That's coming from David. I'm gonna go to David.
Who's eating chicken? So...
I don't know, man.
So, what are we gonna do?
But listen, let me tell you. You see something dirty, just call us up. Just call me up. Call...
But besides that, what are we gonna do?
And I swear to God, they'll come and clean it. I'm positive.
Besides me calling, what are we gonna do? Just so I get it clear.
About the letter informing people, but that's separate and apart. That's still not gonna teach people, you're still, no matter what letter I send out, you're still gonna have knuckleheads.
Can we hold them accountable? Can we go to their door and say, "Hey, garbage is all over the ground, man. Clean it up."
"There's garbage in front of your house tomorrow morning." Do I give you a fine for that?
You know...
No, if it... I'm not saying you put it there. I'm not saying you put it there. But if it's there, what am I supposed to always do? Like everyone said, "Oh, the lawyer's the store owner's gonna keep the stores clean in front of them." And let me point out, they do not come and clean in front of mine. I keep my own. They've never come that far on, to that avenue. Downtown, they do walk, and they do do garbage, and they do the things, okay? But I'm telling you, the DPW, they'll come there. And if you see something, just like I say, call the police. You see something dirty, call us up. I get things all the time. Hey, this isn't right. Like I said, I was out 6:30 picking up garbage with Pat Karate, okay? 'Cause it bothered me. I heard about it late at night, and whatever. I was just making sure he was at work. And we went and cleaned it, and we'll clean it. And the DPW will clean it. If you tell me, oh, they said, "We'll go out there." Hey, my husband, and we will, okay?
This is not my point for you to do.
I got your point. Only thing I do is letter. You say, but, okay, but you have to give me, same thing. You gotta tell me where, when, who, and why.
Okay.
Okay? That's what I'm trying to say. If you see something, say something.
I shall.
That's it, okay?
All right. Thank you.
We're here to help. I told you we shouldn't have let that lady talk. I'm just kidding.
Lance Weinstein for Valadue Terrace. Mayor Curley, in September of last year, at the Village Board meeting, you stated Suffolk Sales received a summons for the illegal construction. And he needed to appear in village court in regards to the summons. But the fact of the matter is, four or five months later, he got that summons. Why did you give untruthful information at the September meeting? Second, why did it take four or five months for a summons to be issued for a clear violation of illegal construction? Second, I have sent in numerous emails with respect to the rental registry, on who enters the information into the registry, who can access the registry. But those emails were never answered, so I asked those questions tonight. Who enters the information into the rental registry? Who can access the rental registry as far as village employees? And is it true, or is it not true, the code enforcement officers and the fire inspector cannot access those records? You don't have to give me the look. You can just answer the questions.
Sir, I look whoever I wanna look, number one.
What's it talking to you?
Number two, number two, number two. It'll come out, and we'll sit down with the employees and explain exactly how it works, okay? We set up a law, okay? The law explains that the village clerk will pretty much be the administrator of that and use the building department, okay? So, that's out there. As it's need to be known, 'cause we're putting it out this week, it'll be put out, and you'll get a letter at your house, sir, okay? You'll get a letter, and you can read it like everyone else can read it, okay?
So, could the building inspectors...
Not so. Not so. I'm not done yet, okay? So, that's it.
Okay, so can the fire inspector and code enforcement inspectors access that information?
They definitely will be able to access that information. I've never told anyone they couldn't. It's not there yet for them to access. Yes.
No, that wasn't my... They can go into it now?
Of course they can.
Okay.
Why wouldn't they? That'd be ridiculous. Matter of fact, if you listen to me, you would've learned over time that I've also said that, and the access for the police department for emergency situations. Because we had a rental, because of the beginning, when we had one of these SWAT, these SWATting incidents, okay? Someone had just bought the house. So, we are doing that. That's all being done in here. But under advice of council, we're doing it a certain way and the proper way. So, you may want what you want when you want it, but it doesn't work that way. It does when the government gets it done properly and right. And that's what's happening right here, Mr. Weinstein.
I'm just asking the questions.
Thank you. And I'm answering them, sir.
Okay.
My way. You get to ask the questions. You don't get to give my answer, too. Thank you.
Okay. Third, have you paid your water and sewer bill yet?
I pay my water and sewer bill how I always, most of the time I do it. Those are my tax bills I pay. That's my business, how I pay my bills, okay? The Village of Suffolk does not lose a dime on any... If everyone paid with their tax bill, their water and sewer bill, the village would make hundreds of thousands of dollars.
But the bill was due to the...
But thanks. Thank you.
Okay, so you didn't pay.
I'm not gonna accept your personal tax, sir, but go ahead. I'm not saying your personal tax.
You're a public official, so...
Sir, sir, you sent me an email calling Clark Osborne the devil. I don't have any respect for you, sir, okay? My opinion, I have no respect for you at all. You said he's the devil. You also...
Let me just caution you.
You also... I'm speaking, sir. Sir, I'm speaking.
Let me caution you at this point.
No, no, you don't...
I am the resident asking the questions.
You know, I know who you are.
I am not subject to public scrutiny, criticism, or personal attacks.
You're incorrect, sir. I have a right. I have a right.
So, if you're going to continue that conduct...
Did you send me an email calling Clark Osborne the devil?
My first piece of evidence is gonna be the video, and my first two witnesses is gonna be the village attorney and keeper of police.
Did you send Clark...
So, I caution you on how you respond to me.
Did you? Did you say...
I'm not here to answer your questions.
Did you say... Okay.
I'm here to ask the questions.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'll answer your questions.
Thank you. Trustee Osborne, when you got ready to retire, is it true or not true?
No, this is not a question answered here. So, we're running a meeting here. Ask your questions, and we'll answer what we want. Ask your questions. Go ahead, sir.
Trustee Osborne.
Ask your questions, and go ahead. We've got a meeting.
When you got ready to retire...
You're not attacking. You already called him, you already sent an email calling him the devil, okay? You sent an email, and I'm not accepting that, okay?
Can I finish my question?
Okay. No, you cannot. Just go ahead. Go ahead.
Trustee Osborne, when you got ready to retire...
No, you don't get to keep it.
Is it true or not true...
It's not a court examination. Make your comments, sir.
That you submitted $250,000...
Mister Weinstein, please make your comments.
In hours that you volunteered for, for dare hockey, dare dances...
I'm not... Mister Weinstein, I'm not gonna... You've attacked my family, my friends. Everything is negative. I'm not answering you. You can ask it if you want. I'm not answering.
So...
You foiled everything possible you could foil, and I know that. Keep all the foils. We know the information that's in there. It's gonna come anyway. So, keep going. I'm not answering the questions.
I'm just asking the question.
Make your comments.
You're the elected official, so I'm allowed to ask a question.
Your time's coming up. Your four minutes, your time's coming up.
Everybody else had more than four minutes.
Finish out. Nobody else was four minutes.
They had plenty.
You can ask them. I'm not gonna answer. It's fine.
Okay. So, is it true or not true?
And I'll point out, you made allegations against his daughter, which is a disgrace, in my opinion.
Personal tax.
It's a disgrace.
Careful. I caution you.
You know what, Mister Weinstein?
I caution you.
Do what you have to do, okay?
I'm not the public official standing here. I'm just a resident.
I know exactly who you... We all know exactly who you are, Mister Weinstein.
I'm surprised the village attorney's not chiming in here.
Mister Weinstein, make your comments, please. It's public commentary.
I'm trying to, but you keep interrupting me.
It's not a court examination with your questions. Thank you. Make your comments. Thank you.
141 Lafayette Avenue is the building next to the Suffolk Hook and Ladder. I foiled looking for the permit and application for the construction work that was going on there. They redid, they reconstructed the masonry at the top of the building. They've had to put up about 3,000 square feet of scaffolding to reconstruct that masonry. Speaking of contractors, that was probably an $8,000 to $10,000 job. OSHA and New York State codes and standards require a permit for the scaffolding. According to your own village code, a permit is needed. So, after five days, I got no response to the foil, so I appealed it. Subsequent to that, I got the response. And I have it if you need to look at it. Your response indicating why they did not need a permit for the scaffolding was codes from New York City. You know, we don't live in New York City, right? We're in the Village of Suffolk. So, New York City codes don't apply to the Village of Suffolk. We go by the New York State codes and standards, not New York City codes. Why wasn't a permit required for that job? That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Any none? Like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm at that, Trustee Osborne.
Public comment period? Motion made by Trustee Osborne. Second, please?
Trustee Hoag.
Second made by Trustee Hoag. In favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. When we do certain work in this village, we have certain things that we require permits for and certain things we don't. You do a little siding, you don't. You do things near your house, certain things you do. For that job, we did not require a permit. And that's why one was not requested according to our codes. We wanna change our code sometime. We can. But one wasn't necessary for that building based on the fact that it's not in our code right now. So, that's why there was no permit for 141. Already looked into it. I like getting permits. I like getting fees, okay? But when I can collect them according to a law as it stands in the Village of Suffolk. Thank you. At this point, Charles Wiki, please.
Good evening. So, I have a number of resolutions. I'll take them one by one, Mayor.
You can do from Resolution 11A to 11, Resolution 11I as a consent agenda, please. Just the two hiring. The two people are gonna hire.
Okay.
The cop and Vito Deas Laborers. We won't put them. We'll do them separately. Okay?
Uh, okay. Item A, requesting authorization for payment application number 18 for TAM Enterprises for the GoShare Hardening of Water Treatment Plant project in the amount of $47,992. Item B, requesting authorization to award the bid for the new Ford F-350 regular cab 4x4 pickup truck with an attached utility body to RC Lacy Inc. in the amount of $63,600. Item C, requesting authorization to award the bid for a new Ford F-600 regular cab 4x4 dump body to RC Lacy Inc. in the amount of $73,385. Item D, requesting authorization, award the bid for a new subcompact tractor with snow blower, snow blade, mower deck, cab heater package, and rear wheel weights to Argento and Sons Inc. in the amount of $30,306.07. Item E, requesting authorization to award the GAC filtration rehabilitation project to TAM Enterprises in the amount of $680,102. Item F, requesting authorization to solicit bids for the Water and Wastewater Treatment Department Chemicals with a due date of March 25, 2020 at 2:30 PM. Item G, requesting authorization to solicit bids for the Village of Suffolk Refuge and Recycling Collection Container District area with a due date of March 25, 2024 at 3 PM. Item H, requesting authorization to solicit bids for the Village of Suffolk Bon Air Pump Station Pump and Motor Replacement with a due date of March 27, 2024 at 3 PM. Item I, requesting authorization for Mr. Joe Hunt to attend the CSEA Peer Trainer Refresher Course on March 25 through the 28, 2024 in Saratoga Springs, New York, and no cost to the village.
Can I have a motion, please, to approve numbers 11A, 11I, please? Motion, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Hoag.
Second by Trustee Hoag. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item J, requesting authorization to hire Mr. William Conklin as a laborer in the Street and Refuge Department with a starting date of March 6, 2024.
Charles, just do both of them at the same time.
Okay. Item K, requesting authorization to hire Mr. Vito Deasus as a laborer in the Street and Refuge Department with a starting date of March 6, 2024.
Can I have a motion to hire William Conklin's labor? And Vito Deasus as labor?
Motion, motion, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, second, please.
I'll say it to Mr. Osborne.
Second made by Trustee Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Charles, very much. Stay on top of that train, it's staying, all right? That dry well, all right? I like her coming to the meeting, but I'm sure she likes to stay home, too, sometimes. But I enjoy her company. Good evening, Mr. Janito.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. We have a few resolutions for your consideration tonight. The first one is that the Fire Department is going to be purchasing a positive pressure ventilation fan. And for that, they need $2,000 moved from their contractual cost over to their equipment costs.
Can I have a motion to amend the 2022, 2023, 2024 Fire Department budget, please? Motion?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert. Second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by Trustee Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next resolution is authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement for the replacement of the network wiring, which includes the telephone wiring in this building. The tel... Both sets of wiring are outdated and in need of replacement. The telephone wiring preceded the village taking over this building in 1978. And the network wiring was installed sometime in the 1990s. But in any event, it's well past its prime and needs to be replaced. In any event, we're looking to have a contract with a company called Acuative in the amount of $40,628 to do the wiring.
Can I have a motion, authorizing the mayor to sign the network wiring agreement, please? Motion, please?
Trustee Hoag.
Motion made by Trustee Hoag. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next one is a replacement of the Bon Air Pump Station, a repair of the Bon Air Water System Pump Station. It's over 50 years old. It's in immediate need of repair. The estimated cost is $65,000. And Charles Wiki, the Superintendent of Public Works, has recommended that it be done immediately. There is $135,000 currently in the water fund contingency that will move $65,000 into the contractual to cover that cost.
Can I get a motion to amend the 2022, 2024 budget for pump station repairs for Bon Air? Motion?
Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne. Second, please?
Second, Trustee Hoag.
Second made by Trustee Hoag. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The last resolution is the plant chemicals for the wastewater treatment plant far exceeded the cost that was estimated at the beginning when we were doing the budget last year by about $45,000. And this resolution is going to move $45,000 from the contingent account in the sewer fund to the contractual cost to buy the chemicals.
Can I have a motion to amend the 2023, 2024 budget for sewer plant chemicals, please? Motion, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janito.
At this point, the trustees, have any comments to make?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, since you put down that we'd be just doing the budget on the April 1 meeting, I'm gonna be out of the country at that time, and I think it's an important meeting that I'd like to be a part of. If there's any opportunity to change the date, I could do it earlier or a little later. No, I think, I think April 30 is the last day.
What we're looking into is if we can change the April 1 meeting to accommodate Mr. Albert here in reference to, so that's gonna be the public hearing for the budget.
It just so happens that's the same week that the schools are on vacation, and I scheduled a family vacation that week, so...
When do you come back, Steve?
I come back Tuesday the 9th.
So we have to do two weeks, right?
Or we could do it just earlier, because I don't leave, you know, like, we could do it on the Thursday or Fri, or that week, Monday that week before, whatever. Or we could do it later, like you said.
Okay, April 15 has tax day work for everybody. Does that work?
It should be fine.
Does that work for you? Does that work for you, Angela? Mr. Janito, Mike, I'm sorry to bother you here, can you turn the microphone for a second? Steve, Steve currently is, has a situation with April 1, okay? That he can't make it, and he would like to make it, alright? If we change that meeting to April, what is that, 15th? April 15th, and then had the vote on the 29th, would we, I think we'd still be all legal on that, correct, Mike?
That's for the attorney to answer, but I think it's, you know, you have to have a public hearing prior to the adoption of the budget.
We have to have a public hearing by a certain date, or not?
I, I believe that there might be a date you do have to have it by, it's in our budget calendar, Mayor, I don't have that handy with me here.
Alright, let's, let's look it up, Mike, alright?
In our budget calendar, we put our date, and then the date legally that's maximum.
I don't have it, I don't have it.
We can discuss it, I mean, it doesn't have to be decided right now, probably.
Well, the problem is, we already, we already said, the public, you had to set the public hearings, it's our problem.
I don't have the calendar.
I don't have the calendar.
Okay, so we don't have the page. Do you have it there?
Let's see if I have it.
If not, I'll see if I can find it here.
I thought the vote, the vote was more important, I thought you could watch the public session on, on, you know, on video, I thought you could get the feel for it, yes, that's what Everybody's on their phones, there you go.
Okay, the public hearing, April 15 is the last, is the deadline date for the state.
To have the public hearing?
That's the deadline.
Okay, so if we do it that night, are we okay? Going to that day, I guess we are.
It's up to you. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, on before the 15th.
Okay, on before the 15th, okay, I think we, I think then we'll change it to 15th.
I think you have to have a new resolution to...
And then the 29th will be the day we actually vote on it, okay? As, as we...
Yeah, it doesn't have to be that date, you would, you would vote on it.
Yeah, but we'll keep the 29th as the same, isn't it?
Right, but I think you have to do, redo your resolution, right?
I think we have to go back and then re-change, re-change the resolutions, yeah.
Just do a, only this thing, and then do all of the ones.
What? Well, I only have to amend one, I have to amend one for April 1st.
All.
What?
You have to amend three.
Oh, three of them.
Just do a motion in, the hearing to revise the schedule for April 1, or we'll be held instead on April 15.
Okay, I'm gonna do a, a motion that, that all the public hearings that were set for April 1st to be held on April 15. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Hoag.